Thank you all for being here. We're getting ready to convene the session, please. Everybody have a seat. We have a little of old business to take care of this afternoon, so we're gonna do that shortly. And then we will have the swearing in of the new council members and existing council members. So that welcome nation by Harrison Ivey, one of our boy scouts. You ready? Can you step up to the podium up here? And everybody please stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, unto God, one and indivisible. Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and may your grace cover this meeting. We pray that all voices will be heard and that this will be a safe place for people to express their opinions. Please help guide our community leaders in the decisions they make. Amen.
Okay, folks, at this time, we allow citizens to make comments to the council. Please, I've got your list here. Please limit your information to three minutes, please. We have a full agenda. And if we do not respond to you, we are not allowed to by law. If what you're talking about is not on our agenda, it's been posted. So we're not trying to be ugly, but if you say something, look for us for an answer, we may not have it. By law, we can't do that. So, starting out. Oh. That's our police chief, so he's gonna give everybody a ticket for parking out here. And said, "Welcome to the new agenda."
I don't know who was this short, but we gotta fix that, too. All right. So the only thing that I have is I want to address council and citizens here. So we have an upcoming event this fall, the next Monday, May 19th at nine o'clock in the morning. We'll be swearing in a new officer. He is here tonight, but I won't tell you who he is or where he is, because you'll just have to come May 19th at nine o'clock in the morning here to find out. So if y'all will join us, that would be great. That's all I got.
All right, here we go. Surprise, surprise. Scott, you and... Sorry, Bernadette, is it? Can't read your writing, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, if you'll identify yourself, please, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, I am Scott Brafew. I live in Forty Wenglow Drive. I am 20 years old. I have Down's syndrome. I am working on getting a job, but I can't drive. If the HOP came to Morgan's Point, I could get to wo- mm, um... Walk, meet up with my friends and be more independent. Please bring the HOP to our town, and thank you.
Dennis, would you see what it takes to see what we can make contact with the HOP, see if we can make that work?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Scott. You did a good job, man, appreciate it. Denise, you were, I saw you somewhere, Denise. Oh, there you are. You moved chairs on me.
My name is Denise Seibert, 104 Great West Loop. I want to say congratulations. Thank you for those that served us that may not be coming back, and thank you for those that are coming on board. I thank you that you, I heard by rumor, you're gonna be talking about staggered terms, I appreciate that. I do appreciate the discussion about ADA. My uncle had cerebral palsy, was in a wheelchair most all his life. That is important to me. And then my grandmother ended up in that same wheelchair of her son's when she was 90, 89, 90. So that's important. And yeah, I agree with him. If this community needs the HOP to come here, that's important for medical and everything else, for getting transportation. But I just wanted to say congratulations to those who are gonna serve us. We thank you for your time, your energy, your dedication.
Donna?
Donna Hartman, 112 Great West Loop. We're neighbors. So I want to echo what she said. But first, I want to thank Scott. You did such a wonderful job, hon, and thank you for speaking. I think we all support that. It'd be real good to look into that transportation. So thank you for speaking for all of us, Scott. We appreciate that. And also, I just wanted to echo what Denise said. Dennis, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your service to your city. You served a decade on the city council.
Thank you, Donna.
We served together for several years, and we had a lot of fun. And then thank you for being our mayor for six years. We appreciate you so much. And I'm sure you won't be a stranger around here, right?
Right.
And I wanted to thank... Oh, I got shut off. No, there it goes. Not three minutes yet, whoever's the timekeeper. And I wanted to thank everyone who ran for city council. It takes a lot of dedication, takes a lot of courage and a willingness to serve your community, to run for this office. So thanks to everyone that ran. And I wanted to congratulate our new council. And I want to congratulate you, Jimbo, on the position you're gonna take. Thank you for doing that. So appreciate you all very much.
At this point, I was going to show a little appreciation for our municipal judge, since he's retiring. I don't see him. So maybe we're just gonna have to abstent here. So good luck, Ted. Yeah, everybody clap for him. Have at it, Donna. Okay, next thing, uh... Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing. For Thomas, do you want to get up and state your deal all day? We have a variance here, and it's subject to a public hearing. So you're gonna inform the folks as to what it is?
I'm Tommy, Westmoreland, planning and zoning. And we have a proposal, our variance for Golden Poppy. They want to extend their fence 15 feet in front of their house and to include the lot beside of them. We've checked all the variance, all the regulations on the setback, on the site around the corner. Everything seemed to be in sight and working. And we had, we brought it forward to the city council for their approval.
I appreciate it. That's at 15 Poppy in Morgan's Point. And do it, right now, I'm gonna open this up to a public hearing. So if anybody has any comments or wants to make any statements in regard to that variance, please speak up. Yes, Donna?
I just wanted to make sure, a little history on that. When we did the fencing ordinance, and that made it safe, you know, we had a lot of variances. And the main thing that we were concerned about when we put it was the safety, our active police department, the ones that approached us outside of it, to make sure, especially on the corner of houses, which you have good visibility when you come up to the sign. If you do, it shouldn't be a problem. So I hope that gives you a sense of proper safety.
All that's been addressed. And Mr. Mayor, we did have a public hearing on the 12th, I think it was. And we had no objection whatsoever.
Okay. I just had to bring it up one more time. So anybody else have any other comments? Yes?
It's mine also. It's located, I have three lots in succession. So I have one that's septic, one that's house, and one that's on the corner that's completely open. The variance was just to pull the fence up a little bit. It actually aligns to the across the street neighbors, but not to my house, because my house is setback 43 feet from the street. So I've asked to just move it up just a little bit so that I can have a garden that deer don't eat. Thank you. That's my whole course in action to request the fence. And it wasn't, like, made. In fact, it's the school zone, it's the school bus stop. I provided benches and lights for the children there at the corner, even though we have lost... Even though we have lost our yield sign at the corner of Golden Poppy to some kids that stole it. And Linecap, I have tried to provide safety for the kids there. So, and I'm a paramedic, so that's kind of like what I do.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Counsel, I'd like to hear a motion to accept OR 25006, which is considered approving that variance. But first of all, I'm gonna close this public session, public hearing. It is now closed, and we are back in regular session. So, counsel, do I hear a motion to accept?
I move we accept 25006 for the variance of the property at 15 Golden Poppy Loop.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, you down and sleep.
Did we get any produce?
Congratulations. Okay, next thing, I'd like to hear a motion to accept 25005, which is the minutes of the regular meeting of April the 8th. I assume everybody said a chance to look at it. Do you have any corrections or additions or anything on those? Then do I hear a motion to accept that, please?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All approved?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay. Okay, next thing is, Dennis, who has had to do interlocal agreement. We had talked about this in the workshop, a lot of you were not here. This is an agreement between us and the county. You and here just briefly let them know.
Yes, Mayor. This is a, an action item to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Morgan's Point City Council and Bell County. And the purpose is to authorize the county to regulate subdivision plats in the city's ETJ. And that is in accordance with Chapter 212 of the Local Government Code. And one of the benefits of this is, is that whoever does have that responsibility will be required to maintain the infrastructure, maintenance, if you will. And that's a cost we won't bear by giving the county that authority. And given the way the annexations go today, it's less likely that we're gonna have a voluntary annexation. But if it did, that doesn't change. They could still do that in the future.
Okay. Do I hear, do I hear a motion to accept that interlocal agreement, please? Be ILA 2501.
Why is everybody holding? I will make a motion to accept. We've talked about this for three meetings. Uh, gosh, the ILA 2501 to give the county the maintenance power on our ETJ.
Second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next thing, discuss, consider ordinance 25007 has to do with meeting Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinance. Dennis?
Yes, Mayor, council. This is just to solidify the understanding that the county will be required to handle the permitting in the city's ETJ, as just approved by the previous action item. And this changes our ordinance from where we would have that authority to where the county will.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 25007 with the changes.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any further, any further... Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and then asleep. Okay, folks, now it's come to the time y'all all waited for. Now we're gonna move to the new council. Nadia, you're gonna certify the results?
Well, I'll teach you to do that. I wanna, I wanna thank all the candidates, the ones that were elected and the ones that ran. Thank you. It's, I love to see more candidates run than are actually elected. It shows interest in the community. And there were many times when we didn't have to have an election because we didn't have enough people running. And that's kind of sad when you, we have about 30, I'm thinking close to 3,300 registered voters in Morgan's Point. And, you know, we still don't have a real big turnout on that. So it would be nice, and we may try to help some by doing it. We may try to eventually move that, if the election dates to maybe November, and make it in conjunction with the national conventions that are in the elections. So might, that normally increases our voter turnout. But anyway, that's, that just may be in the future. Nadia?
So I will be doing what you guys have all came here for in order to collect the results of the City of Morgan's Point Resort General Election, May 3rd, 2025. Whereas the mayor of the City of Morgan's Point resolved and ordered that a general election be held on May 3rd, 2025, in the City of Morgan's Point Resort, Texas, for the purpose of electing the following city official to the Morgan's Point Resort Council. One mayor and five council members. Whereas there came on to be considered and returns of an election held on this third day of May 2025, the purpose of electing mayor, one, and five council members. Whereas the returns of the election have been duly canvassed by the city council, and there being a cast at a, of the election of the total number of votes. And each candidate has said that the election have received the following votes. All the candidates were notified of their numbers. Without further ado, James Jimbo Snyder, mayor, unopposed. Stephen Bishop, 132 votes. Roxanne Stryker, 131 votes. Bruce Leinhart, 105 votes. Dorothy Allen, 127 votes. And there was a tie that I have to disclose. That was 93 due to provisional votes. There were votes that we had to get certified by the county. They had to come back. Lots of legwork in that. There was a tie at 93 with Mr. Samuel L. Palin and Patrick Kloon. And moving forward, the next council member will be Samuel L. Palin at 93 votes. It is therefore found and declared an order that the city council of the City of Morgan's Point Resort and that the above election was duly called. That notice of said election was posted and that the election was held in accordance to the laws of the Texas Election Code. That being said, James Jimbo Snyder was elected mayor, and the City of Morgan's Point City Council is subject to take the oath of office. And that being said, with the election of five elected council members of the City of Morgan's Point Resort are subject to take that oath of office in Section 1, it is further found and determined that the results of the election are canvassed and tabulated. And the preamble there reflecting and expressed the desires of those persons voting of the election. It is further found and determined that in accordance of the laws of Texas Election Government Code, the city secretary posted written notice of the date, place, and subject of the meeting of the, on the bulletin board located at City Hall. A place of convenience and readily accessible to the general public. And said notice being posted and remaining posted, therefore, mutants.
Just to make it clear with the tie of the 93 votes between Mr. Kloon and Mr. Palin, with the 93 in the winner. Just let y'all know it wouldn't, something about a draw, slaws, straws, or whatever, but there were some options on that. But everything's good now. Nadia, thank you very much. Oh. Members, congratulations, new members and old members. Thank y'all. Thank you for running, and thank y'all for running. You gotta, you gotta stretch what you do. I remember somebody, I don't saying that, somebody once said, "The worst thing you can do is not, the worst decision you can make is not to make a decision." And start, and push it down the road, won't cut it. So good luck on everybody.
All right, raise your right hand. Of course, say your own names. "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas..." Oh, repeat after me, sorry. I'll start over. "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will, of the State of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state. So help me God." Oh, I'm sorry. "Of the State of Texas, and will do the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God." That was that. I need you guys just to come around the table so you can sign.
Congratulations. Jimbo? I don't know, he's not, he's not leaving, is he?
No, I told him to stop. Yeah. Yeah, I told him not to go to work.
Do we want to do the mayor pro tem?
Yeah, yeah. So, welcome, everybody. It's a different view up here, so... Yeah, first order of business for new councils, we need to select a mayor pro tem. So we'll open it for discussion and nominations of a mayor pro tem.
I will nominate Roxanne Stryker for mayor pro tem.
I'll second. Roxanne, any other additional nominations?
Can I make a comment?
Please.
I think Roxanne will be outstanding. She's been in the position for the last two years, and I know she's worked really hard and gone to a lot of classes. And so I would definitely want Roxanne to be our mayor pro tem also.
Okay. Any other additional comments? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Roxanne Stryker mayor pro tem, say aye. Those opposed? Congratulations. Okay, real quick, I know we've discussed it briefly, but Dennis, if you'd come up here, please? I'm not, I'm not gonna use the mic, you guys know it. Big mouth. Dennis has served this community faithfully for 16 years. 10 years, city council, six years as mayor, right? Pretty close. Pretty close. Give or take a day, which when we get older, doesn't matter.
Yeah, it does, too.
Okay. I don't know how many cars you sold me, a few, so, but... I'd like to retire. On behalf of NPR, previous council, current council, it's been a pleasure to work with you. I will be beating you up for guidance, as I've already, already told you. All right. Let's see, it says mayor's comment in here, so I think that's me this time. So first, I want to say congratulations to sitting council. I look forward to working with you all. The previous council was a blast. I think those on council, I've learned a lot. Bruce, I know you have experience on council. Sam, welcome aboard. I know you have some history of politics as well. And you, you will both bring a lot to the table to this new council. So I look forward to continuing, hopefully, some of the momentum we've generated in the past two years. And like I said, working with you all. So with that, let's get to work. First thing is Resolution 25013 discussing, consider resolution for Hazard Mitigation Action Plan for NPR. Do you want to discuss that, or would you like me? So I'll continue. This was discussed in the workshop. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is an 815-page document that we've been working on for about the last 14 months with private contractors. And essentially, what has happened is we have reached out to all, they have reached out to all the local communities and have asked for our input on what we determine to be our greatest hazards. The document includes everything from, it is about as in-depth as you can get. We talk about dam failures, earthquakes, droughts, floods, tornadoes, wildfires. Of course, not all of that really impacts us directly. If the dam breaks, about the only thing we're gonna have to deal with is no water and sad pathetic shorelines. So there is an excerpt available, and I will make sure that we get some printed copies at City Hall for our residents and council, if you want them. The file is too big to email them, so... Yeah, we'll make sure it gets on the website as well for you to read. Essentially, it does not tie us to anything other than adopting the plan. And it does free up the opportunity for us to seek some funding to assist in some of these hazard mitigation plans and programs that we're trying to get on board. So with that, I'll turn it over to council. Any, I'll open it for, accept a motion to accept a resolution. Okay, you got Sam? I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Roxanne, second. Any discussion?
So we have not adopted one of these in the past as a city. So this will be the first time we've adopted Bell County's Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Yes.
And my understanding is it's $5 million in here that is said to be implemented over 24 months, which, of course, we cannot do financially. But my, my understanding also is that we're gonna go out for some grants, specifically using this document of our sincerity in understanding our hazards and the need that we have for financial assistance. And that before we implement any plan, of course, it will come back to council for fiscal review and approval.
Orion, are you still here? He departed. Okay, go ahead, Sam.
I'm sorry.
You'll get used to it.
You hear me? Yeah. I was just asking if there will be a, we're going to approve this plan today, but I was asking, will there be agenda items to address specific hazards? And I'm thinking specifically about the fire danger currently.
You want me to go ahead? Go, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council, next, on the 27th of May, we have a meeting. We're hoping to bring a budget amendment to address a program that's more, a little bit more comprehensive than just a one-and-done task we're trying to take across the city. So the answer is yes. Plus, we are gonna, I'm gonna give a city manager update and talk about something near-term we're doing as a result of the Texas Forestry Service, who just... as a result of the Texas Forestry Service who just visited us, uh, visited the fire department. We had a meeting last Friday to talk about some of the more pressing issues we need to deal with. Uh, but yes, the answer is we will be bringing, it will be an action item for you to not only discuss, but to consider approving, and then we'll go from there.
There's another resource, resource besides the Forest Service. Uh, I understand Texas A&amp;M has a, a department.
Yes. With assistance. You probably better qualify to answer all this.
Yeah, so to answer that question, yes, TEACs. Um, and so that is, uh, that is a great resource and an asset they, that we use, uh, both PD and FD. That's where most of our, uh, schooling takes place. Uh, so yeah, they are on board. We work very close with them at the, open the door for funding for us. Um, and, and Dorothy was right, we, we should have, quite honestly, should have been participating. So it's, I think it's a start, step in the right direction. Any other discussion?
So if we don't have a plan, we can't apply for grants, so.
Correct, through, through, we, we can, just not through this plan.
Could, but this is like extra documentation that we're serious, we understand it, we want to address it. So a grant reviewer will look kindly on this, I think.
It would look similar to a parks plan or something like that.
There are. This, um, we have new mics coming, just.
I don't think it'll work like I want it to, at least not consistently. That's, this plan will also make us eligible for certain types of funding from the state. Did not participate in this grant. I'm sure there's some funding as, as Dorothy spoke of. But the, the bottom line is, is that it's a plan. They'll, it will give us opportunity to apply for grants and it gives us a, let's say, uh, if there's a, a sudden increase of federal funding or something, at least you've got some idea to look first. Whether you go with this or not, it gives you some idea of, of, uh, how to spend those dollars.
Yes, you get to.
So, okay, um, any additional discussion, questions? A motion to accept. We got a motion and a second to adopt. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, next item up for bids is resolution 25016 discussing consider resolution for city council member resolution uh, to award the RFQ 2503 for general engineering services, uh, to KPA. Nida? Look at that, she's already there.
Try. Okay, so we had, we put out an RFQ 2503 for a general engineer. And we had six respondents respond to that as well. And from those six, we chose, uh, KPA. Uh, we felt they were the best fit, um, as I was mentioning earlier. So the key stakeholders, they 25 years experience, uh, 26 years. Just the top two or three people had over 60-plus years, um, between them. So a very, but well-versed, uh, one thing that we were really looking at too was being able to be a certified, uh, flood plan manager, um, to look at our, um, water systems. And that would, that would have been fantastic, and then also the engineering part. Um, so the city of Morgan's Point Resort has experienced significant severe weather events that have caused damage to both public infrastructure and private property. The weather events coupled with the city's resilience of the aging water system and roadways as well as parks highlights the need for ongoing improvements that will require the services for an engineer. Addressing these critical infrastructures needs is essential for ensuring the public's health, safety, and welfare. Discussion and conclusion to better prepare for the city of, for the future and meet the procurement requirements of the Texas Local Government Code. The city is issuing an RFQ 2503 General Engineering Services, um, with the six response for the RFQ. After evaluating the responses, Casberg, Patrick, and Associates LP, KPA, was the firm determined to be the most qualified and would bring the best value to the city. Fiscal impact, there will be a fiscal impact when the city engages KPA for engineering services. Funds for such services will be allocated through the city's budgetary process and as approved by council. The recommendation is that, uh, city council award RFQ 2503 to Casberg, Patrick, and Associates LP for General Engineering Services and authorize the city manager to execute a three-year contract with said services.
And the only thing I would like to do, the city of Morgan's Point, and based off of that information, city council will prioritize, uh, which projects will go first and allocate funding accordingly. So this is, this is really the way a lot of cities, uh, operate. They, they want to know what state everything's in, and then they can start based off of public safety, welfare, and things along those lines and help. We can actually start coming up with a plan to systematically go through most pressing issues and not subjectively just deciding, I think it's going to help the community in the long-term planning. And I, I think council will use this on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Okay, council, I'll accept a, uh, motion to accept, uh, 25016 for, uh, General Engineering Services with KPA. Yeah, well, let's, so what we're going to do, Sam, I, I read this, I was trying to learn. So we'll, the way we should do it is accept a motion, a second, and then open for discussion. I learned that, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, so. Accept a motion.
I forgot.
A motion to accept 25016.
Move to accept 25016. The services of Casberg, Patrick, and Associates.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, open for discussion.
I'm very familiar with KPA, I have great deal. How's it handled? Or is it each project is a different?
Yeah, it's, it's basically like an on-call service. When we need them, we'll have them. But the start is right footing. We want an assessment of all critical infrastructure, and that will give us something to work with. And they'll prioritize it based off of our, the health, public safety, and welfare. And that will, like, it's a starting point. Doesn't mean we have to follow that recommendation. It doesn't mean that, uh, we won't. But it gives you all something to work with to make, in the decision-making process.
Do I presume that, uh, some has been agreed upon for that initial work?
There's been nothing, this is general engineering, so it's just, it could be anything. It could be roads, it could be a water tower, it's good for three years, so as we need them. And one of the first things we want them to do is do an assessment.
But you're going to pay for the assessment.
We will pay, and the overall CIP program, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any opposed? Let's consider, uh, the PD's request for application as Matt moves up. So basically FY 2026, it's a grant, uh, SB 224 catalytic converter grant. Chief Schutze.
All right, I'm back again. So let's do this again. So, uh, mayor, city council, uh, in front of you should have a resolution. Um, that resolution is a request for us to make an application, um, for, uh, the SB 224 catalytic converter grant. Um, the funds for this grant, um, are to help, uh, catalytic converter theft, um, and combat that crime with the caveat of, there's a provision in there of that funding to help, um, curb and prosecute crimes of stolen vehicles, um, or vehicle theft and burglary, um, which we do have a fair share of. That is probably our second-ish offense that we've come across really frequently, uh, especially the burglaries, um, it's crime of opportunity. So, um, what that resolution is asking is no specific amounts in that resolution. It's a gen, general resolution asking for us to allow to, uh, make an application for this grant, uh, purchase at least two cameras. Um, it is a 80/20 grant, so 80% they grant will pay for, 20% uh, we will have to pay for. Um, we already have, uh, with the, at least the two cameras that we're looking to pay for, we already have that in existing budget funds. We also found out today that, uh, if we decide to do, let's just say we do two cameras, four cameras, six cameras, whatever we do in the grant, whatever, uh, we decide to do. Uh, we've also heard that in future grant funding, um, this grant started last year. Um, it's this year and looks to be, can, uh, continue for the foreseeable future, uh, because the crimes are on the uptick. Um, we have been told that whatever we get in this grant application or awarded in this grant application can be included in the future years' funding in the subsequent, uh, years if we apply. So if we buy four cameras out of this application or expand into four cameras, that we would, should be able to include those four cameras in the following application, the following year, as long as the grant continues. That's what we were told. So, uh, that, like I said, that is what, uh, the resolution is for. Um, and I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Roughly, how much is a camera?
Uh, each camera is $2,500 a year, so very, very small impact. Uh, we have four right now. We're, we have a, we have a gap in our coverage and, uh, and I'm not going to disclose it in public. We do have a gap in our coverage. Uh, I was born in the morning, just not yesterday morning. It's there. Um, and then we have, uh, another way, another subdivision that is on the, uh, increase or on the development side. And we want to buy a flexible camera there so that we can put that in that subdivision to, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not a dedicated one in, in or out yet. Um, but, uh, through ways of travel, um, as it develops, it can be. So we want to kind of put that there until the subdivision is fully developed. Um, and we find out where RC limits are going to tie in with Temple. Um, to find out, at that point, we would probably, uh, change that to a stationary camera. Um, but that also allows us, uh, to move that camera in other places that we might need it, um, uh, for investigation purposes. It's a flexible camera that we can move on our own. Uh, like I said, at least those two cameras is what we're looking at with this, um, through our existing budget. Um, funds for that, that 20% can come out of that. And then again, if we'd expand any further, um, I believe it's the, I wouldn't call them leased. Um, they're, you know, if the software is more or less software maintenance, um, and, um, something goes wrong with the camera, um, that we, we need it a lot, $500 per camera, per year.
Do they work on Verizon or?
They're connected and they're solar-powered. Um, they can be, um, you know, if we had, uh, actual electricity in, in the place that we're looking at, they can actually be hardwired in. Um, but, uh, most of everything that we have is on solar power. So, and seeing it, that's how small of an impact it is.
It's reassuring.
It's also not standalone in that we participate in a network.
Correct, yes. So the, so the network is across the entire United States. Um, and, uh, we share, we share with all law enforcement agencies in Texas. Um, and then, uh, we, of course, naturally request, um, that agency share their information with us. So investigations, purposes, we have access to, um, a, a lot of cameras across the entire state and other states. And then vice versa, they do that as well. So it's, it's almost like a net. And then, and then the company, um, you know, as, as the future growth, um, and we talk about security infrastructure around other things such as parks, we have another discussion for that as where is the company provides other functions besides, uh, license plate reading. So, um, so there's other ventures that we can, that we can migrate into.
All right, no further discussion. Dennis, do you have anything to add on that? Anything you want to add on that? Okay, uh, then, uh, we'll entertain a motion for resolution 25017.
Motion to accept 25017.
Okay, got a motion on the table, second. Okay, all those in favor?
Coming up.
Hello, um, welcome aboard to the new people that just got elected. Thank you, uh, mayor. Uh, my, uh, comments today are going to be very short because next meeting, you're going to scavenger hunt, um, the journey that we've been on. And I think that's, I don't want to go into too much detail because you're going to get a lot of it next week. But if there's a couple of questions, I'll be more than happy to, to answer any.
Any highlights you want to share on just our overall financial position relative to budget for our first, like, seven months out of 12?
Okay, well, keep in mind, I've only been here for two. Yeah, overall, um, there's still a lot of, um, items that need to be looked at as far as, uh, back payments that we do owe. The IRS, sales tax, uh, some of it going back to 2019. Um, so the auditors are, are working on stuff. Thank you for turning in the questionnaires, um, that I, that I submitted to you all. Uh, because as soon as we get done with 2023, which is pretty close, I have a meeting with them scheduled on May the 15th. And that's why May 27th, I think, would be a better idea for you to see everything that's gone, that we've uncovered so far, didn't you?
Totally. Thank you for being smart.
I know there's going to be suspense, but you'll get it all, I promise. You'll get it, your PowerPoint will be, and you'll get the budget amendments that we're going to, you know, all the new revenue and stuff. It's just, if I open up something, I think the meeting is, you know, may take longer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, uh, just a couple of quick updates. One, we did get notification from FEMA that we're going to receive 675,000. I sent you all notice of that, uh, just letting the public know. 675,000 is a reimbursement. Well, and, uh, it was, it was great that we had the funds too. It was great that not only did FEMA pay us, uh, 75%, but the other 25% came from TDM, Texas Department of Emergency Management. So that's good news, and that deals with the debris aspect of it. So that's one of the things. We've got still some, uh, rooftops and things like that. We wanted to see if we can get some funding for. We have not been notified. We are between that and insurance, either through insurance, active fire, uh, mitigation. One of the things we, uh, Texas Forestry Service was at the fire station doing some training this past week. And they, they commented on some of the risks that we're running with those big piles of chip wood. If you look behind in the pit area, they're large. 5,000 cubic yards roughly has been left there that TCQ gave us permission to spread it. However, uh, that can create some issues trying to spread it the right width and, or depth and, uh, still not create a fire hazard. That said, where it's located, we need to move it further away from the tree line that's in proximity to it. So we're going to be doing that in short order. BJ's already, he understands what needs to be done. He's working on getting the equipment. We'll have to run it. It is not a planned expenditure, but it's not an overly expensive process. But we do need to push that stuff away from those tree lines. We are, this is not really mulch. We talk to it as though it is mulch, but it's really not. It's some of the, the, the wood chips are this big and thick, uh, all different sizes. The thing of it is, we are trying to work with the company. I don't know, Terrence not here, but he is supposed to give them a call. They seem to be interested. Those that do the packaging mulch that you could buy from the store, there's a company outside of Austin, between Austin and I think New Bronsvold, somewhere in that area, that might be interested in it. We're going to try to figure out a way to get rid of it. It, it, zero cost to us. Obviously, if there's an opportunity to pick up money, but it's really not the issue. We really need to get rid of it. And, um, so that's, that's being done relatively quickly. And, um, we're hoping to get rid of it soon. If not, worst case scenario is, we'll have to load it up in trucks and have it hauled out how, to the Temple landfill. Hopefully, that's not the option we end up doing because there's way too much you can, couldn't give it away. It's going to, I mean, 5,000 cubic in a pile, well, that's what came from that, that pile once it was mulched up, if you will. So now, that's something that we did not get reimbursed through FEMA because there are certain requirements for not only, uh, collection, but monitoring of service that has to be done in order to meet it. Hence the 675, or 674,000, we met that requirement. But the stuff we laid on the ground before FEMA got on the ground and designated it such as a, as a site to collect, and not monitoring it, it did not, was not eligible. It was 53,000 to mulch it up and stack it. We need to get rid of it, and it's not mulch per se. So what we're going to try to do is the plan of action I gave you. We'll give you more information on the 27th and see where, where we're really at. But right now, we need to pull it away from the, the, uh, tree line. And even on the, where the pistol range is, there's trees up there. Some mulch was laid up there as well. We're going to have to pull that, those trees right around that to reduce the risk. And we also need to do some mowing the grass and things like that to try to knock the weeds down. So we're not giving ourselves any fuel just in case something were to happen. Lightning strike, power outage, who knows what could have happened. So that's pretty much on that. And then the other thing I'll just let you know is we're going to do some, uh, um, we're going to have to get a $8,000, uh, chair, I guess, ADA compliant chair for the pool. It's not fixable from my understanding, and so we're going to go ahead and knock that out. And that stuff, again, we will, we got extra revenue coming in. Not that, for example, we have $60,000 more than what we expected through FEMA. We budgeted 614, we get 674. That's right at $60,000 more than we anticipated getting. So that's not committed anything. Again, you will get all that information as we move forward and how this money is. Again, you will get all that information as we move forward and how this money is planned to be spent before we get down that road too far, but ADA compliant chair is not an option for the pool, and moving this stuff away from the tree line is not an option. And we'll do our best to get rid of it without costing us any anything.
Sir, Ed, not to create a clown show or anything, but is there any advertising that we should do to, with maybe the help of COGS Network on possible organizations that would want this?
Well, we're looking at companies that do the business, and that's the best bet, I think, to get rid of it. That's the, the mulching company, that's, in fact, I think it was Mary that found one of them, although Texas Forestry recommended it as well. She found it, so that's one of the primary ways, like, we think it was, it's an incentive to get there, to pick it up and get it out. You have to have the capacity, it takes a lot of trucks to get that stuff out of here, and so...
Maybe not one, but maybe five.
Oh, oh, no, it's many more, I'm sure. It's 5,000, we end up...
Organization.
Oh, oh, no, true, there's multiple we're calling, this is, this is this one we got a nibble on, we're following up on, but yes, we've got others we're trying to, to follow up on there. As far as, the county's got the same issue, they've got around, everybody, to my knowledge, is limited to 5,000 that wanted to spread it, so, but they have an old landfill, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So they, but they have the same issue, because it, it's a subject, you know, with all the rain and, and I'm not, simply you can probably weigh in, what that mulch does, when it gets wet and the heat that generates from then. So, what do you, just like, um, if you're trying to, if you want moisture, if you let it sit, it's a perfect permit, be a good way to put it, that you don't stay on top of it, it's going to take longer, but also, we saw this with Temple, when they just got on fire, they were out there for days, and you, more water than I can imagine. But it is made, it's a company we need to be very close eyes on because without addressing the appropriate, you just want it to sit there, and if that is a little... So, and the fact that we're moving it, I think, helps lessen that risk for a little bit because we're turning it, if you will. So, our last week, I spoke with a research associate who was a state, who made me down, and that's what made me say, he said, I understand y'all, that everything costs money, and everyone, we're doing what we can, that that's the way you do, keep it permanent, keep moving around, that way, the heat that is in there, it's sorted out. As long as you can stay on top of it and be proactive and move it, I think he even said, we could just make it into smaller piles, that way, you're managing, it's a few different options on how to, how to set the handle. So that's what I just want to let you all know, that's something that we're moving quickly on, and that, and again, we're going to be looking at on the 27th, our goal is to bring a budget amendment for fire mitigation, it deals with much more than just dealing with the, because we're basically one big canopy here, so there's lots of debris that's laying around, it's dried out, we've got to get a program moving, and this is the start of it, and I think you'll see a more comprehensive approach to addressing it in the easements, the private property, there'll be some ideas as far as what we're planning on doing, and get your all's feedback and/or direction on how you want to do it, but that we'll be prepared to do a budget amendment to get some of it moving on the 27th. And that's all I had to provide.
And Mary, just tell up her phone that, who was that, Texas Mulch? How much, how much we have? We have a lot.
All you want, we have all you want.
Yeah. Just of note on that, and then we'll close up, was, one of the ideas that we kicked around, actually, was allowing residents to come in and just have at it, take what you want for free. Sounds good, briefs well, looks great on paper until you have a fire, and then you still have 5,000 cubic yards of mulch in your city, so...
And mayor, also, it's not really mulch like you would see, these are chunks of wood that are, I'm not sure it really work any other way unless someone mulched it further, you know, if you want to call it.
The only thing I see is coming out of the planning and voting workshop on the 27th, do you have that somewhere else? It's not on your meeting. Do you change after that? So, don't go by the, you know, that after, after, okay, so what are your times?
It'd be five, it's a special session, so it's not a regular session like we normally would have, a regular meeting. It's a special session, but we will have a workshop beforehand, and it starts at five, is what I understand.
On May 27th.
On May 27th.
P and Z will not meet?
Will be in this building.
They will meet again in June. And it should be, the calendar should be updated soon.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it should be updated on the website calendar, for sure.
Okay, no additional business, we'll go around the horn, or if you want to start, any comments?
I did have some comments on future agenda items. I just want to make sure that we covered staggered terms and possible voting date to November and EDC's tiny village. I read in the paper at, on the Belt and Journal that it was supposed to be discussed at this meeting on the 13th, but, you know, it wasn't on our agenda, I don't even know if we were aware of that, but I want to make sure that the council addresses it. EDC's tiny village.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's two things. And of course, thanks, everybody, for coming. For those of you that voted, thank you so much for voting, and we will figure out how to get more people to the polls.
Bruce.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to serve y'all again. I look forward to it, getting in and getting to work, obviously our first meeting, so, yeah, happy to be here, thank you all very much.
Arcsane.
I'd say the same thing, and thanks for, council for voting me in as mayor pro temp. You do save the city a cost of a name tag because I can prove this to them.
We'll take it.
Sam.
It was a very close election for me, but I'm delighted to be here, and I thank you for recognizing me, and I'll do my best to contribute.
Steven.
Like always, privileged to be here, and, you know, reach out to us if you need something.
Neil, any comments from the legal side of the house? Well said. Anything, or you, sir? All right, I got a couple of quick things. So, yeah, thanks for being here, as always, we all appreciate it, getting involved, you know, I said before the election's your voice, or your vote is your voice, now that voting is done, you still have a voice, so please, reach out to your council members, I'm always available, as many of you already found out, keep doing that. So thank you for voting, thank you, everybody who came out and voted, yes, ma'am. Oh, you'll get my smiley face there again. Yeah, I'll be there Friday, coffee with the, it says city manager, or city, yeah, it says council member, I don't think I am that anymore, but, yeah, I will be there Friday, so come on out, have, have some coffee, and let me hear what's on your mind. Yeah, so thanks for voting, thank you to the folks that worked the voting booth, that were up there taking care of us and making sure that the votes got, got in, got tallied, and did all that behind-the-scenes work. Thank you very much to our staff that put who knows how many hours behind the scenes with the election, so certainly appreciate it. One thing came up that I think is interesting, we talked about voting in November, staggered terms, so I have not researched it, I need to find out. There was actually a bill in the Texas House, Neil, I don't know if you heard anything about it, but essentially what Texas was looking at doing was doing away with many elections altogether, unless it was a special election and realigning everything to November, so I kind of hope that happens because our, quite honestly, our turnout numbers in May are horrible. I think we had like maybe 5% this year, so, but that's neither here nor there, so we'll keep an eye on that and see how that goes. So, lastly, we have some munchies, feel free to stick around, meet and greet, say hello, tell us what's on your mind, thank you for being here, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I got a second. Go home.
No, eat, no, eat.
I'll hang out. I just wanted to hammer that thing.
Sir.
Wait, y'all. Yeah, we don't have to do that, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, it's driving me crazy.
I thought about that, I'm trying, yeah. Congratulations. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, go to work. What? Oh. No. I have no idea what that is. Um, double check my desk and see if there's anything. Don't, we're trying to shoot for December, but, yeah. Nothing legal in it. What I get is just a final update, review of forest, no sense of dragging you unless you just want to be here.
But you can talk to him and do what you want.
Yes, sir, thank you.
But I'm here for you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, I know, thank you.
You have all those collated.
Yes.
Hold Nada. Hi, well, I've been, I've been creeped out. I'm like, oh my God, what did we do? So, I, I am, my wife, you know, she's the ultimate documentary. Right, good. And so, this is really, I love her, though. You know, I actually got onto Jessica, I was like, water, I don't want to use, but man, they're almost making me want to, have to use those. Or barrier. But, but they ended up, after I said that, it was just in everything. And they made it better. I mean, and he had, I mean, I had to go, gracious, where is this? As you can see, we've been sharing, sharing lots, so that was our customer delivery. That was, that was so cool. So, that was really cool, but then... So we dropped, dropped, we're on this, we're seeing it, we're just, there's an area, each one time. Melli was taking videos, he's got it working. I was like, you went in the bathroom, I was like, all right.